Good evening. The September 27, 2018 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be given by Cameron Nunley and Morgan Rue. Both are members of the Weeblow Scout Troop, D N eight, PAC six twenty-one, and both are fourth graders and attend Hudson Peck Elementary. Please rise.
God our Father bless us as we gather here today. Help us to understand your promise better. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live and work and play. Teach us to love you more and to love all your people and to do our very best every day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cameron, Morgan, thank you both very much. It's very nice to see you gentlemen standing up and do this in the fourth grade. I don't know that I could have done that when I was in the fourth grade, so congratulations to you all and to your parents as well. Thank you all very much for attending. Tonight in our employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Longview Fire Department High Angle Rescue Team, A Shift. On August 31, the Longview Fire Department was requested to assist the Texas State Fire Marshal's Office and Texas Rangers with an extremely difficult high angle body recovery. Sadly, an explosion at a facility in Lone Star, Texas had resulted in a fatality. Specialized team was required to safely remove the body from approximately forty feet above the ground. The state Fire Marshal's Office stated that from the minute the team arrived, you could tell that they were professional and dedicated to their work. They immediately began to survey the situation and form a plan. After more than an hour, they were able to recover the body in a professional manner. Several of the team members approached employees at the plant and asked if there was anything that they needed, even going so far as to offer emotional support. Crew worked hard to protect the dignity of the victim and his families who were present on the scene. Their professionalism was extraordinary for such a difficult situation from an operational, physical, and emotional standpoint. The crews working together as a specialized team exemplified the best of what it means to be a member of the Longview Fire Department. Please come forward. Steve Dankers, Jonathan Cameron, David Holly, Brandon Reeves, Corey Haston, Rance Rogers, and Corey Clinton. Tom, you want to come up?
I'm right there.
Okay. You know, this was, this was an amazing rescue in a sad situation, and that happens sometimes. But the dignity that you all brought to that family, the professionalism with which you all conducted yourselves does not go unnoticed. And the skill that you perform your job in is at the highest level we can imagine. And there'll be times you'll be making those rescues on victims that aren't deceased, and that will make an impact in their lives. And we appreciate that and the dedication you provide for our community every day and the surrounding communities. And it does me a lot of pride and a lot of joy and a lot of good in my heart to know that you guys are out there not only for us, but we can provide support to surrounding communities when they need it, and that's what it's all about, brothers helping brothers. Thank you guys so much. You're the real heroes. True heroes. Y'all are the best. Thank you so much. Tonight in community recognition, I'd like to recognize a very, very special individual that a lot of people of you all will not know. You may not know his name, but you might know what he does. You probably don't even know why he's here tonight. I'm going to recognize John Richardson. John, are you here? Is John here? I think he's here somewhere. I'm going to read about John. If he's here, we'll catch you in a minute. John has adopted two sections of the Borman Trail since 2009. The two sections are about two miles in length, and he walks it nearly every day picking up litter. Probably collects two Walmart bags each time he goes. We only ask that those adopt a park volunteers volunteer about four times a year. On days when it reaches over a hundred degrees, Mr. Richardson sets up a cooler with ice cold water and passes it out to all of the people that walk down the trail. He has taken it upon himself to move limbs and brush that have fallen on the trail, even taking hand tools to make sure everyone has a clear path. Mr. Richardson goes above and beyond to treat the trail as if it is his own, because it is his own. It's taxpayer-owned, for all of us to enjoy. He lets us know about issues which we're very thankful for. The trail looks amazingly wonderful, mainly due to Mr. Richardson's efforts. So I applaud Mr. Richardson, even though he's not here tonight. He may come in a little while, and when he does, we will recognize him when he comes. But I want to stand up and applaud Mr. Richardson for doing something that he doesn't have to do, does it out of the goodness of his heart. Sean, if Mr. Richardson comes in, would you please let me know? I'd love to recognize him publicly, okay? But you know, gang, that's what it's all about. That's why we do community recognition. We recognize people that do things just to do them because it's the right thing to do, you know? You don't have to do this, but you do it because, you know, it makes a difference, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and I appreciate that very much, and hope John shows up so we can recognize him publicly. So, thank you for that. Okay, we are to citizen comment. Before we have citizen comment, I'm going to read, I'm going to reiterate our rules of citizen comment really quickly so everybody understands them, so that no one gets their feelings hurt when things take place as they should due to decorum. Each speaker who wishes to make a public comment must complete and submit a comment card. Speakers will state their name and address for public record. Each speaker's limited to three minutes. After that time, the microphone will be turned off. Speakers are not allowed beyond the podium. If you have material you would like to share with the city council, we provide it to the city secretary prior to the meeting. The city secretary will make sure the council members receive that material. So with that, we will proceed with citizen comment. Please, please abide by the rules that we have set up for our citizen comments. My first card is Tom Tibbetts. Tom? Or John. I'm sorry, John. You're right, he's worse than mine, John.
I know.
I'm looking right at you, and I go, wait a minute, that's John.
Well, we've been here before.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Oh, John Tibbetts, 118 Skyline Drive.
Thank you.
My wife and I have been here before, and we've talked about some of the same things over and over. We wrote a letter to the town stating our need for speed bumps on our street. They wrote back, as you see the letter that I've given you copies, they wrote back and said that there was no need for it, that it wasn't, hadn't been important in other places. But we searched the internet, we searched cities, and we found out that it's saved lots of children's lives on the streets. It's also saved accidents. We believe that if there were speed bumps on Skyline Drive, people would use the loop to go to all these restaurants across the street. And that's pretty well all I have to say about that. I just wanted to bring it up again so it stays in your minds. And if nothing's done about it, you'll see us here next month at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Deidra Beckworth.
Nona Kasha, Mayor, City Council.
Deidra, please state your name and address, please.
Glad to be here. Nineteen hundred S Green Street, apartment 200. I have been under a doctor since I've been here. I was diagnosed with bipolar. As Ben said, I've been diagnosed with paranoid schizophrenic. I had to exercise my right as a client to get out and enjoy my life. I like meeting different people. I was thinking of a support group and making it diverse. I suggest to SSI, that's the Social Security Building, I went to the Social Security Building and tried to tell them about the change I was going through, and working part-time, nothing was said.
Thank you, Deidra. Dan Dar.
Dan Dar, Eight Spring Creek Place here in Longview. Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'd like to speak on behalf and in favor of the upcoming bond. I'm a longtime resident of Longview, raised a family here, in fact, had a son that's come back and chose to make Longview his home as well. Proud of that. Also had the fortune to serve in the city as far as Parks Advisory Board numerous times. Even saw Lear Park come about. What a proud day that was when we opened that park. Things like that wouldn't have happened in Longview and increased our quality of life without vision and passion from folks like yourself and the diligent work of the city staff that puts all this together. I applaud them all. They've done a great job with this. We have to be cognizant of the fact, though, that Longview needs to prosper, needs to move forward, and we need to create a legacy for those behind us. Two grandsons coming along, and I'd love to see things like our parks improved that need maintenance and needed upgrades to keep them in the shape that we need. So, thank you much for what you've done thus far for the bond, and I do hope the citizens of Longview understand the importance of building Longview's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jim Martin.
My name is Jim Martin, thirty-seven oh eight Stretcher Road. I come back down here to ask for that quarter of a million dollars before I can build me a building on Gilmore Road, pay taxes, more. And Coach Calipular's big company, they got it. I can't see hiring, giving that for them for seven employees when I can hire between thirty and fifty. But anyway, the next deal, if somebody called me anonymous yesterday and said, did I know anything about the five and a half million dollars that the city takes out of the drainage fund and put in the slush fund? I said, no, didn't know nothing about it. He said, did you know we're still paying a quarter percent tax on drainage, and they're not doing anything about it? And I said, no. Then, a lady calls me today and says, Jim, do you know that we're not going to get the basketball court if they don't have enough asphalt in McQuarre Park? Because that's how it's figured in the asphalt for McQuarre Park, because it's not in there, and if they don't have it, you're not going to get it. So, you know, it's, it's... I know I complain a lot, and just like this gentleman praised on the parks and stuff, we got fifty-three parks where I understand. I don't ever get to go with any of them. I go through McQuarre Park just to watch these kids that can't play basketball, because there's not but one there. And Dr. Mitchell, when he was, come up here one time before, brought it up, and still wasn't anything done through the council or anything. And when they said they fixed a remodel or add to it, they added monkey bars, and that's it, and then finally put a roof over the picnic tables. But I think a lot of this is a waste, twenty thousand dollars for a sign to save McQuarre Park? Uh. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I don't know who's under the table getting the brown envelope, but it kind of irritates me. I hate to see my tax dollar waste, waste, and waste. And that starts right here in the city and goes all the way up to the top. Sitting and watching stuff today on TV and business is bad because everybody watching that, that's a waste. But that's all I got to say. I know I'm not going to get the quarter of a million, because Steve says he wasn't going to get it. And I just, why give Calipular a quarter of a million? Give them a quarter? I just, somebody's going to have to explain it to me. I'm not a very bright person, but I know two and two's four, and it's going to cost me tax dollars to give Calipular a quarter of a million dollars. So, all I got to say is, I hope I don't ever find out why, or who, or what, because I'll be back down here again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Jeremiah Hunter.
Jeremiah Hunter, three fourteen East Twilight Drive. I'm actually addressing a item on the consent agenda, item agenda, sorry, that's eight G, and it's a grant, or a contract, rather, with a local contractor for the Community Development Division Full Home Rehabilitation and Emergency Repair Program. I'll wait.
Thank you, sir.
It says it's for the Full Home Rehabilitation and Emergency Repair Program. So, to my reading, that looks like we have a division of the city that is in the home repair business. So I'm asking the question, and I would appreciate an answer from someone after council exactly what this is. Just saw the agenda yesterday. This is to highlight the point that I've been making for a long time. The city is spending, in some cases, quite a bit of money on functions that are not necessary for running the city. They don't add to quality of life. Everyone loves to talk about quality of life, but we're spending money on things that don't really address quality of life issues. And then, when it comes to true needs that the city has, like police station renovation, fire station renovation, suddenly, our city leaders want to cry poor. And, oh, we got to whip out the credit card and double our city's debt. So it's things like this is what I'm talking about. People try to accuse me of not wanting to follow the comprehensive plan. I say, no, let's follow the comprehensive plan, instead of spending money in other areas that the plan doesn't call for. Same thing with the capital improvements program. Mayor, you mentioned yesterday that, well, we can't save money long-term, because then the council is the only people that can vote on it. Well, you can vote on a plan like this for a long-term plan to save up money for capital improvements, and then we don't have to ask for huge bond issues. So, I would disagree with your assessment yesterday that you can't save money long-term, because if you, as a council, can designate a plan and say, this is what we as leadership are going to do going forward, then it's possible to do. You don't have to wait for a huge problem to come up and then come to the citizens and say, hey, we need a bunch of debt. All right? So, the phrase "leadership matters" really applies. One more thing, found out that we've known about the need for more police station room since 2001. That means seventeen years that we've known we needed a police station, or expansion, rather, of some degree, and yet, figuratively speaking, nothing was done, until suddenly, oh, hey, let's get a thirty-four million dollar loan to buy a new building, or build a new building. Okay? So, again, leadership matters. Planning for the future matters, and you guys need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard Manley. Okay. Thank you, Richard. Nice to have you in chambers tonight, by the way. Thank you very much. John Newstead.
John Newstead, three one four East Anne Drive. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in favor of the bond proposal collection coming up. My wife and I, we are from East Texas, and we actually met in Longview over a decade ago. And through our jobs, we actually lived in four different states over a course of eight years. And through that, it gives us a unique perspective in having seen how different cities operate and what they have to offer for their population, for their citizens. In regards to the police department, the fire department, and the infrastructure, I'm not going to speak on that. I feel as those are situations where it's pay now or pay more later, which is pretty obvious to me. But with the, having lived in some, a city that has put a lot of emphasis on their parks and recreation, I can tell you it makes a very huge impact into their quality of life. My wife and I, since we've been back in Longview for about two years now, we love pushing our stroller of our two young kids along the walking paths that we have here, as well as walking our dog with us on that, and enjoying the splash pad with our church retreats and stuff that we do there. So, we definitely enjoy that, and we have them. Now, when I relocated from the other city that had all these things, I realized what a city could have, and I was moving down to Shreveport, Bossier, and we had a weekend to buy a house. And so I told the Realtor, I said, the number one thing is I want you to have a map, because I'm not familiar with Shreveport, Bossier, have a map of all the parks and recreation stuff, walking trails, dog parks, et cetera. It was to my surprise, when I get there, I asked the Realtor for it, and she says, we don't have that here. They didn't have a dog park even. Now, they had a walking trail that was along the river, which is nice. If you don't mind driving thirty minutes and baking in the sun, it's really good. So, unfortunately, we didn't really use it. And so, with that here, I'm going to say, if we do these expansion projects, though, I know Chief Bishop's doing a fine job, but it will be for naught if we do not get the break-ins under control, because you can have the nicest parks there is, but if anybody's going to drive there and they don't feel like their belongings are safe, then we're going to be in trouble. And then, as well as a fiscally conservative, I'm generally opposed to increasing taxes and feel that government should do a better job with the resources they are given. I feel the city is great stewards of their money, and these are good projects for us to move on further. And I just want to close with, as a native East Texan, we are committed to the community, but if the jobs are not here, the youth will move off. If the amenities are not here, the transplants will leave. I, for one, want to live in a growing city that when my children grow up, that they want to stay, and more importantly, are able to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Jason Jones.
Hey, my name's Jason Jones, eighteen hundred Centenary. I'm also here, like John and the gentleman before him, to speak in favor of the bond proposal coming up. And I ask the citizens that are on the fence to keep some of these things in mind. I'll put some, a certain level of subjectivity in here, but I'm also going to give you some numbers, and anyone that wants to go on LongviewTexas.gov can go on and get the same information. I strongly feel that, one, as a fiscal conservative, self-described, I feel that these are needed projects. I feel these are core infrastructure-type items. It's not just the roads, it's also the police station, the training facility for the collaborative training for the police and the fire departments. You know, if you remember, a couple of years ago, most of you guys up there and Mayor Mack were charged with making the city safer. You know, we had some violent crime issues going on, and we addressed it head-on and added more police. There are more police on the streets of Longview patrolling than ever before. Along with that comes other, other certain levels of responsibility. You know, it doesn't matter that this was known in 2001, or it doesn't matter when it was known. The building was built in 1977 that the police are housed in right now. It was based off of eighty-two employees. We now have 234 employees. I think that's, that's a sad fact. The Stamper Park for the fire department, that facility is rundown, outdated, and it's in a residential area. So the folks there are disgruntled that this is going on in their neighborhood. It needs to be moved. So again, you know, the technology's outdated as well. A lot of things have changed since the seventies. Phase one would be a joint Longview Police Department and Fire Training Facility, allowing for collaborative training, like I mentioned, I hate to sound redundant, real-world training for a very real-world mission. Streets and road improvements, I'm going to speed this up, Marbury, Cotton, Fairmont, and Real Road, I'll give you one little tidbit of information. Let's say Real Road, for example. Eight thousand cars a day go up and down, navigate a two-lane road, okay, with multiple accidents. That, that needs to be addressed. A lot of the failing roads, Fairmont, extensive repairs. And I'll tell you one thing, jump ahead of myself for a minute, we're going to pay one way or the other. We all know that. I think this is a good plan that's been put together. You can cry wolf all day long and say, oh, no, it's not good, you know, you're doing this, you're doing that. You know, based off my house, and I've got other properties in Longview, but based off my house, I don't mind paying less than twenty dollars a month for the difference that it's going to affect by going forward with this. So, yeah, well, I think it's finished already, but thank you.
Jason, thank you very much. Come back. Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card after the meeting? Please come forward, ma'am. Okay. Please come forward. Are you all speaking together?
Well, we only have three minutes, so I have the first half, she has the second half.
Perfect. Come on up. That's okay. Just come up, state your names. That's fine. Come on up. Come on.
Okay, my name's Jamie Garrett. I live at two oh three Eden. My daughter and I are here this evening to say what we can, see what we can do to help with healthcare in Texas. I'm sure you're already aware of the statistics, that Texas is rated thirty-eight with medical and thirty-nine for mental. We need resources, networking, to keep hammering away at our healthcare system that is an epic failure. What brought me here, brought us here tonight, is my husband Jesse. He is fifty-two and suffers from dementia. He is currently in Gray County due to a situation that occurred when he had an episode. Please understand, he has not committed a major crime. His charges include failure to identify public intoxication and theft. He does not drink. He has dementia. He was unaware of his actions due to the severity of his dementia and was extremely confused and irrational. He was just released from Good Shepherd at 5:30 PM September tenth, and because he didn't sign paperwork, he was considered AMA. He was supposed to be released that day pending placement in a facility. The social workers could not find placement or offer us any options. They just swept us under the rug once again. That evening, I fell asleep around 10:30, and when I woke up at 4:00 AM, he was gone. I called Longview Police Department to file a missing persons report, and was informed that he had been arrested September 11th at 12:05. We are very grateful that my husband was not shot when he failed to follow commands of the officers on the scene. His behavior was out of sorts. I completely understand why our law enforcement came to the conclusion that he had been drinking. Our concern is if hospitals cannot place him, I have little faith our law can place him. There is talk of training our law enforcement to deal with people with dementia, Alzheimer's, autism, and mental illness. My question is, why is law enforcement having to be responsible? We do not ask our healthcare providers to learn law enforcement. Our healthcare system is failing each and every one of us. When Good Shepherd was looking for a place for my husband, we tried to inform them. We have spent months to get him placed in a long-term memory care facility. We've knocked on every door in Longview, Tyler Gilmore and Kilgore. He doesn't fit the parameters required for memory care or mental hospitals. He is fifty-two and apparently minimum age is fifty-five for memory care. Mental hospitals will not take him because his condition is medical, not mental. The majority of the facilities are private-paid, minimum-cost care would be fifty-five hundred a month. Who makes that? Our private insurance nor Medicare cover this.
Angela Garrett Rager, five three seven Hallsville Heights. For those who may not be aware, dementia is a symptom, not a disease. I could give you in-depth details of my dad, Jesse Garrett, symptoms and disease. As I've been on this journey for four years, but I only have a few minutes, I'm here to put our government officials' feet to the fire. We elect you into office to be our advocates all the way to the top. Our healthcare system is in desperate need of major changes. Maybe these changes can start right here in Longview, Texas. This is likely a major contributor to the overcrowding in our jails. A lot of our homeless have the same type of issues as my dad, but due to poor healthcare and minimal options, they are never diagnosed. They may not have a family that will stand up and be their voice. This has been a very scary experience for our family, and we have been shaken to the core. We believe this is God's way of saying, wake up, people, this is happening every day all over the United States. I have taken it as a sign to stand up every day all over the United States." I have taken it as a sign to stand up and be the voice for not just my dad, but all of those who do not have a voice. You may not have firsthand experience, but the day may come, God forbid, when you experience something similar. Please understand, I'm not asking you to get involved in his case. He has lawyers for that. I am here pleading with you to help make a change for people in our community like ourselves and my dad. I understand this won't happen overnight. It's our hope and prayer that this will be the beginning of a change for present families affected and the future generations coming up behind us. Please tell us what we can do to partner with you to help reform healthcare in Texas, for starters. We are requesting additional time to meet with you, mayor, to explore other options further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no more cards. Would anyone else like to speak? Would you all please fill a card out for us before, before you leave the meeting? Just fill a speaker card out for us, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'll get you one. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We got a public safety update. Chief Bishop's out of town. He's practicing his golf, bowling, and ribeating contests right now. He's ready for you, Chief Stillman.
I got it. Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have been happening, happening in the fire department since we last met. Earlier this summer, the fire department rolled out in this community a campaign called Stop the Bleed. And it started here as a local level at the city. We started training city employees. It has now morphed out to the school districts, and now we're seeing it trickle down into just individual businesses in town that are requesting this level of training. Not only that, but I'm excited about the fact that we're now seeing partnerships sought out of this. Both of the local hospitals, as well as Champion EMS, have gotten on board with what the Longview Fire Department started, and they're starting to roll this out even beyond Longview. So, this is a great program. This is an opportunity that we had earlier this week to share this with the, uh, the businesses in the Chaparral Plaza, up off of Judson Road. Lewis Morgan Drugs, Charmin Sew and Center, and Cook's Lighting, Flooring and Decor, all participated with their employees through this session. And I think everybody had a great time, and they walked away with some exceptional knowledge about what to do in the event of an emergency and how to stop the bleed, which was, this is all about. So, thanks to the crews and for those people being willing to participate and give up a little bit of their time to learn some valuable medical lessons. Earlier this week, the Spring Hill Junior High Culinary Class got to visit our fire station number four out on the northwest side of town, and the topic was cooking fire safety, since these students are learning about cooking and working in a commercial, possibly, cooking environment. Fire, cooking safety is a huge thing for them. So, they got to visit the fire station, learn some of those tips about how to go about working in that field, hopefully in the future, if that's what they choose, and do so safely without experiencing any type of fire or burn, certainly. So, we appreciate their participation and stopping by the fire station for that lesson. We're right up on October, and most people know that October brings Fire Prevention Month into play. So, we're already starting to get a ton of requests for our puppet shows, that we take fire prevention out on the road. We get with these young children out in the community and educate them on stop, drop, and roll, and just general fire safety in their house, having fire escape plans. So, our crews got to visit Christmas Prep School earlier this week and got to do a puppet show. You see Sparky there interacting with some of the kids. And then, as, as just today, we did the same program for a bunch of first graders at Bramla Elementary School. So, again, and getting that important message out there in the field, out in the community, so that these kids can be safe when it comes to fire safety. Back on August the 31st, there was a little football game here in Longview between the Longview Lobos and the Lufkin Panthers. And as we did in previous years, there was a wager behind the scenes between the Lufkin Fire Department and the Longview Fire Department. The loser of that game, their fire department would come to the other one's community and do some fire truck washing. So, I appreciate the effort of Coach King and the Longview Lobos to make sure that they pulled off a victory that night. And just on Wednesday, we had that debt paid by the Lufkin Fire Department. They're great sports. We've got a great relationship with this fire department. Even though it's an hour and a half down the road, those guys, we're all one big family. And we had a great time visiting with them at Station 6 on Wednesday. Appreciate them making that drive up and watching some of our dirty trucks for us, and we look forward to that matchup again next year. Our annual EMS subscription service, I'm fixing to begin that commercial for the next three months, so just buckle up and get ready. We open this program up on October the 1st, the subscription program. You're eligible to sign up for the fall, for October 1st to December 31st, you'll actually be re-enrolling or signing up for the 2019 calendar year. So, if that's something you're interested in taking advantage of, as far as only paying $70 for EMS services here in our city, instead of facing potentially a $1,000 EMS transport bill, please look into this and see if that's something you want to take advantage of to save yourself some money in the event of a medical emergency or, or trauma. And also, our Code Red Warning System is a free service provided here in the city of Longview, so that you receive timely notification of urgent events concerning natural disasters or weather. So, again, visit the city's website to see about signing your phone number up to receive those important calls. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman?
Chief, your Stop the Bleed class, do you charge businesses for that?
No, sir. Not a thing.
How long is the class?
It depends on the number of participants, but roughly an hour, hour, hour and a half.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you for that, and thank you for the collaborative effort that you guys are doing to regionalize our fire with Lufkin and, you know, Lone Star and people like that. It always helps when we, when we make our circle bigger. So, thank you very much for what you guys do.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
We got a consent agenda. Any items council that pull up for separate discussion?
May I approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item, Consider Resolution Adopting a Five-Year CIP Program, Allocating Funds for 2018-2019 Projects. Mr. Bradley?
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. I'll be presenting next year's capital improvement program tonight. I hope to have your vote of approval. Let me get the slide buttons here. As previously reported, we, we adopt these CIP projects based on policies that were set by council in 2001. There's priorities, there's urgencies that we score these projects based on the comprehensive plan, our master plans, our master thoroughfare plan. We set up an agenda for the five-year program. You have those. This tonight is the one-year program. This is the one-year program that was approved last year. These projects are under construction. Some are complete, or they're in design, so they're moving along. Next year's drainage projects, we are going to continue to work with FEMA on property acquisitions. We have identified two more properties. And then, for our culvert project, you, you can see, this is Brent Road. When I first come to work here, I heard about Brent Road. We are long overdue to, to work on this culvert and replace it. This is the location of where our drainage projects are. There's Birdsong, Ralph, and Brent. It's $300,000. It's our drainage CIP fund. And the Brent Road, we are proposing to be done in-house, just as we're doing Meadowview. For our facilities, Mod Cob Activity Center, the, there was a study done two years ago for what can we do with our complex out there. The fairgrounds and Mod Cob Activity Center, we got a whole list of projects, but one of the first ones on there was, let's do the paving. So, there on the right is what it, what the bad paving looks like on the north side. They just did some work on the south side. It's under contract by Welburn. So, we're already paving the south side. We're getting ready to do the north side. This is funded by the hotel occupancy tax. Now, the whole program is right here. Water and sewer, all these projects are funded with a Water and Sewer CIP Reserve Fund. There's a donation from Operations and Maintenance to do these projects, $900,000. These are lines that are under size, or they're, they're beyond their capacity, or they're beyond repair. These are just neighborhood street projects. We do these every year. So, it's, it's something that we do to continue to maintain our infrastructure. Following that, we did a master plan update for wastewater in 2008. We hired a comm and a local engineer to look at our entire system. We have three projects from that master plan study. We can get an economy of scale. They're listed separately, but we're proposing to do them together. These are lines that are under capacity. They are, what you would say, flooding in the current condition. It's, it's not a risk, but it's, it's models that they predict in the future. These are major backbone systems of our sewer collection system. If we make these upgrades, larger lines, it prepares us better for our growth. Our wastewater treatment plant project, we have a, a project that, that we're recommending for improvements at the entry of the wastewater plant. As we begin to, begin the treatment process, we separate out solids. We've got a bar screen here on the right. This, this is, uh, this has been there for a long time. It's, it's not efficient, takes a lot of maintenance. You can see the wear and tear on that. That's ready for a replacement. We also, at, just the, the next process is the grit chamber on the left. This is, take out more solids before we treat everything. We need to make capacity improvements for this chamber. We're also going to add an additional structure for grit separation. And while we're there, since we're going to be tearing up that part of the, the plant area, we have stormwater bypass that we're also going to be putting in. On the left are our lagoons. When we get a storm, you know, we triple our load that goes to the plant. We need to be able to get that transferred down to these lagoons and get a, get that stored there until it can be treated later, rather than flooding our plants. So, we're adding additional capacity, as well as storage, investing in the, in the future of our, our plant. Also, there on the right, there's just another thing that needs to be done. This is our tertiary filters. This is the sand media. They've only got about a 20-year life. You have to update those and replace those. So, that's the project that we're recommending, $3.5 million for our only wastewater treatment plant. Right next door, this is at Grace Creek. This is the second-largest sewer line that's coming into the plant, our major interceptor. Due to floods and, and erosion that we've had over the last two or three years, we've had damage done to our encasement structure that encases the line. We're recommending a project that'll put in concrete piers and concrete pilings. That's $300,000, just to repair that infrastructure due to storm For our water system, these are the projects, once again, our annual replacement program. When lines just get beyond repair, we need to increase the, the, our service in these areas. These are, these are everywhere. So, we got six of them. We will partner with CDBG for Haley Drive, so $900,000 for our regular line work projects. This is a little bit bigger than the line work. This is a focus on areas that need improvement for water quality, water circulation, and, and capacity. We will also make improvements so that we can get more fire flow. This is looking at the, you might say, our, our water system and our water distribution on a bigger picture, rather than just, you know, why is this line breaking on this street and fixing it? We're looking at a larger area. This is probably, will be a multi-year program that we look at neighborhoods that have probably been cut off by physical restraints. You'll notice at Ware Acres and Hampshire Place, that's right next to Grace Creek. So, we probably need to make a connection through there. But it's to study and make the improvements for our water distribution, provide cap- capacity for fire protection, as well as water circulation. We did a water master plan in 2001. This is the next project on that list to make improvements for pressure and flow in the northwest portion of Longview. So, we're just moving along with our plan as, as we grow in the city. Now, at the, you're actually at the beginning of our water treatment process, we have a pump that needs to be replaced at Lake Cherokee. This is our raw water pump. This pump gives us one-third of our water that we use in a peak summer day. This pump's 50 years old. It's been worked on multiple times. Someone pointed out, I never noticed in the picture, but over there on the, on the left, somebody's wrapped a bunch of visqueen around something, and that was a makeshift repair. But this, this pump needs to be replaced. It's been identified for quite a while, but we need that to continue to provide our water to the distribution system. The last water project is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Radio System. This is a snapshot of the control panel for our water operators at our plants. This is where they keep control of the pressures and the flows. You know, radios and information technology, that stuff changes quickly, and it's hard to keep that maintained. But we've recommended $150,000 for staff to do these improvements, buy the equipment, and the staff will do the work. We've got a great skater team. So, they recommended this, and I support that. This is a wrap-up. We got a total of 14 projects, most of them funded by the Water and Sewer Capital Reserve Fund, $10.8 million. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions about these projects.
Any questions, Mr. Bradley? I would like to point out, since we're talking about the CIP, and it was brought up earlier in citizen comment, that, you know, this one-year CIP is $4.4 million, and, and your total is, your 1819 is $10.7. And these are all projects that we, that we desperately need to do. These aren't things that we can put off. These aren't wishes, these are needs, correct, Mr. Bradley?
Yes, sir.
So, that's what we do with the excess money that we have, is we take care of projects that are necessary to be done in the city. If we, as was suggested, spent that $4.4 million to do our so-called bond package, it would take us 26 years to do the $104 million bond package. You can't build a fire station at $4.4 million a year, or a police station. You have to have it all at one time in order to build that, because you can't start construction without the money in hand. So, that's the difference in how we do CIP versus a bond. A bond is to bring things together in a, in a rapid period of time. This should do one year at a time on, on projects so we can afford to do, that we have the money to do it, that are necessary to be done at that point in time, correct?
Yes, sir. These are cash-funded.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, just want to make that very clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Other community interest, Mr. Moore?
We, uh, we've been chastised a lot lately over many of the cost estimates for our proposed bond projects, and, and I'm okay with that. Frankly, a little public criticism is part of our job description up here. However, at our last meeting during citizen comment, the statement was made that $20,000 was budgeted for artwork at the new police station. This is flatly untrue. There is not now, nor has there ever been, any money budgeted for artwork at the police station. And I, I bring this up as an item of community interest for the simple fact that I would urge both the opponents and the proponents to make sure of your facts going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, let me thank everyone who attended my town hall the other night. I think it was described as being, I was peppered. But, as you said, it, it comes with the territory.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. Hope Talks. Hope Talks is a conference designed to shine a light on the importance of mental health, self-care, and mindfulness, sponsored by Partners in Prevention. You will hear innovative ideas that spark hope for a more compassionate, well-balanced community. This will be October 23rd, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM at Mod Cob Convention Center, and they will be giving continuing education credits, so encouraging everyone, social workers and counselors to please come out and participate. Thank you.
Mr. White?
I just want to acknowledge a local organization that invited me out last weekend to take part in their business summit. It was a journey, East Texas Journey of a Young Lady. It's an organization designed to provide mentorship, leadership, skills, personal and professional development to young ladies ages 13 to 19. Was really impressed with it. Just wanted to give them a, a quick shout-out and say thank you for including me, and I enjoyed sitting on the panel with a lot of other professionals from the area. Thank you, mayor.
Ms. Ishihara?
Anything for me?
Mr. Wright?
First of all, and I bring this up frequently during the year, but I want to thank, I was driving down Lake LeMond between Cotton Street and Highway 80 this afternoon, and I don't know if you drive through there very often. I do every day, back and forth. And you can walk through trash up to your knee just about along there. Capital One was out picking up trash today, and I sure appreciate it. Stopped and talked with them, and they're doing a great job out there, so I want to thank them for that. Also, this past week, I was speaking with a lady. She had some questions about her trash pickup, and she said, "You know, my, my city councilman, David Wright, doesn't talk that much at the council meetings." So, I, I just wanted to say tonight, a little bit, and it's tough, because I follow Kristen a lot, and Kristen's a great speaker, and then you have to listen to me, and so, it doesn't always work out as well. But, you know, over the last few weeks, I've kind of gotten the impression that some people don't- don't really understand what we did on the bond election. And all we did, we don't, we're not in favor from up here. We're not saying whether we're for it or against it. All we're doing is voting to give the citizens of Longview the opportunity to determine if they want to spend their money on the bond or not on the bond. So what I would encourage all of you to do is to tell your story. If you're for it, tell your story. If you're against it, tell your story. But as Ed said, make sure that the facts that you are telling are the accurate facts.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pertle.
I want to thank our city manager and our fire chief. We had a meeting with the gentleman Tuesday. It was very productive on one side of it. I think he learned a lot of stuff that, and I learned a lot more that I already knew. Our public, you know, our fire station and our police station, they're second to none. And you just have to sit through and listen to these gentlemen tell you what's going on and why we spend the money we spend on those folks. And I was real proud of what Chief Stillman laid out for us. So if anybody has a question on those kind of monies we spend on public safety, they really need to sit down with some of these people and understand what we're spending it on, because our first charge is to protect the citizens of this town, and we can't do it any better than what we've got to work with. And those gentlemen at the fire department, and the women at the fire department and the police department, they're second to none in this state, so I wish everybody would understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Pertle. Mr. Bonds. Well, the City of Longview voters will consider three separate propositions related to the public safety facilities, streets, and infrastructure, and parks as part of a November 6 bond election. Voting will be held in conjunction with the general November elections taking place at various polling locations established by Gray County and Harrison County. The last day to register to vote is Tuesday, October 9th. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/bond. Nash Night Out is this Tuesday, October 2nd. Get to know your neighbors, build partnerships with the police, and learn more about crime prevention. Learn more and register your party at longviewtexas.gov/NNO. Longview Public Library will host an orientation for the Haunted Library volunteers at 1:30 PM on September 29th. Volunteers primarily scare patrons at the event, but can also help with setup and teardown, prop building, advertising, and makeup. Alternate dates for orientation are available at longviewtexas.com/hunted. Plans are already underway for the next Homeless Restore stay on Friday, January 25th, 2019, Longview Exhibit Building. Organizations wishing to be involved are encouraged to contact Director of Community Services Laura Hill at 903-237-1392. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/homeless. Upcoming events. Neil McCoy and Friends benefit concert takes place at 7:00 PM on Saturday, September 29th at the Beltray Center. This year, in addition to Neil's energetic and captivating performance, he'll be joined by guest Charlie Pride. Come support the East Texas Angel Network by joining Neil McCoy and Friends at this special event. Learn more at easttexasangelnetwork.com. Texas home to some of the best craft beers in the country. Craftoberfest was created to bring those unique tastes to historic downtown Longview's Heritage Plaza. On Saturday, October 6th, come sample beer with the benefits going to the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Big Pines. More information available at begreateasttexas.com. Join the Longview Symphony Orchestra for an unforgettable night on Saturday, October 6th, when they'll be playing with Canadian rock, man, jeans, and classics. Experience the music of Journey with classics like Open Arms, Who's Cryin' Now, and Don't Stop Believin'. Tickets are available at the BeltrayCenter.com. Got to love those, don't you? More information in these events, please check out and visit the calendar at, visit longviewtexas.com, or for city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. I don't have, but I know we had a survey question. Is it, we got it? There we go. Okay. This is kind of fun. When you view the results of an election, does a percentage of voter turnout defect your opinion of the outcome? Yes or no? Well, check it out. 54% said yes, it does. 46% said no, it doesn't. And what I really put that up for was to see if it really mattered if we had a low voter turnout or high voter turnout. Does it affect, do you think it's a moratorium or a referendum? Or is it, it is what it is? Doesn't matter if it wins by one vote and there's just three people vote. That's really all that matters, because it's the way democratic votes work. Majority wins. But if you don't like the fact that a few people are making decisions for the whole city, then get out and vote. That's all you got to do. Get out and exercise your right to vote, which is the next question, which is even more fun. What percentage of people would you estimate historically vote in city elections in Longview? Five to nine? There you go, right there. The highest percentage is 30%, which was 10 to 14%, and that is the true figure. That's about what votes, well, actually, that's in a really good city election. A really good city election. Mostly, it's 5 to 9%. It's very poor. And so you have anywhere from 6 to 12% of the population determining what the rest of you have to do. So once again, if you don't like that statistic, then get yourself out and vote, and get your friends out to vote, and make that statistic a higher statistic, because, once again, in the society we live in, in this wonderful country we live in, majority wins every time. So that's the way it goes. So thanks for participating in the survey. It's been a lot of fun. I enjoyed reading all the comments on that.